Okay, good morning, everyone, and thank you, Kelsey. Hopefully, everyone received. I think that's the reason you're on the call this morning. Our email for Friday Coffee. So happy to introduce our fearless leader, our city leader, Ms. Carrie Turgeon, Mayor Carrie Turgeon, and our leader just up the street from the Chamber, the Director of the CVB, Diane Gillespie. Diane, thank you for being with us also this morning. I am not going to give too much background at all before I pass it to Mayor Turgeon. This has been a long road, as we all know, and as Kelsey had indicated, Monday evening, the City Council made a huge decision in selecting Chesterfield Arturis Proposal for the MSP development, and we've all been connected to this in certain different ways for a long time. So what I'm gonna do without rambling on is I'm gonna pass it to Carrie. Now, what we're gonna do is I'm gonna roll up some slides, I'm gonna share my screen, and Carrie's gonna walk through those. And then what we'll do is, obviously, as Kelsey had indicated, we've got the chat box there. Share your questions in the chat box, and we'll get those answered for you. And then if we have some time at the end, what I would like to do is then open it up for any announcements at the end of our program. So with that, Mayor Turgeon, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, everybody, for joining. And as you know, this is probably my favorite subject to talk about. Who would have thought it'd be so exciting to talk about a prison? And Sean, you mentioned that it's been a long road to get here, and I would say it feels more like climbing a really large prison wall with all the barbed wire on top to get into prison. So who would have thought we'd be trying so hard to get in to our prison and get this thing redeveloped? But it's very exciting where we are right now. So I'll give you a little update, and then we'll go through some slides. So as you know, Monday night, the City Council voted to move forward with the Chesterfield Group, and we're very excited to start that next process in this redevelopment. So we have until the end of this year to come up with, work through all the details of the project, and then get that all finalized. And what's really exciting about this is the state had given us two years to select a developer, and that would have been at the end of this July. So we came out ahead of that deadline despite the fact that we had a major tornado not just come through our city, but come right through the prison. So the fact that we're still meeting these deadlines and coming out ahead of them, I think is really impressive for our city. And then we have three years from now then to break ground. So the state gave us basically five years in the agreement with them. So a little bit of background, of course, we know there's been a lot of work done since the prison has been vacant now for about 14, 15 years now. So we've had a lot of time to do this, and the state in the past had a redevelopment commission that came up with a master plan. And so now we're just taking that, we're able to get it updated and hopefully now into action. So and I know that we also are going to have David Parmley, who is the President of Chesterfield Hotels, and he's going to be joining us at some point. I know he's in transit a little bit, traveling, so I'm not sure when he'll join. But when he does, he can jump in and unmute his phone and just introduce himself and say hi, and looking forward to everybody getting to know him as well. So I don't know if he's on the line just yet, but whenever he does, we'll do that. And then I'll go through this, and then we'll have Diane finish out with some tourism things about MSP. So Sean, you can pull up the slides there. And really, what this is is mainly a packet of information that we received from the developer. So the first slide mainly just shows kind of an overview of what this project looks like. And what's so important, you think about, you know, the view of the Missouri River and the potential there, and really what this site could look like. So this kind of shows what it would look like finished out. And kind of the middle, like where the word penitentiary is right there, that's where a lot of the action is. To the left of that, kind of above all the words, is the historic area. That's where the historic buildings are. And then we have about 30 acres there in the middle. And then you'll see on kind of the bottom right, that's what already exists, that state property. So we have the State Health Lab there, and there's the two State Office Buildings, DNR are already on the site, those two. And I think that's actually, that's the DNR, and the State Health Lab is further to the right. But that's what is there and what could be. And if you go to the next screen, that tells a little bit about just who the project team is. So Chesterfield and Arturis, you may be familiar with the Broadway Hotel in Columbia. So Chesterfield Group has done the Broadway, and then Arturis has done our wayfinding signage, and they have some Jefferson City folks as part of that group as well. And CMPS, we're all familiar with them here in Jefferson City. And then it lists there the other partners, because as we know, in a development like this, it takes a big team. The next page just shows a little bit of how that structure is, that we all work together. And you'll notice there, on the very left, it says "community", and definitely, community has been a huge part of this project team. And then that links right into the city and the community partners, which was made up of the city, the state, the county, the CVB, and the Chamber getting this thing going. So the next page shows an overview of the 2002 master plan. So, you know, 2002 doesn't seem like that long ago, but wow, when you really think about how long we have been focused on redevelopment of the penitentiary site. And back then, if you, you know, were able to look closely at this, the thing kind of in the middle that looks like a U or an L shape right there in the middle, next to where the roundabout is, that is a proposed convention center. So even back in 2002, when this master plan was done, they contemplated the importance and the desire to put a conference center right there on the MSP site. And then there were also a couple of hotels and other redevelopment there. And to the far right is still state property that could be redeveloped. So this is nothing new. It's something we've been talking about now for near 20 years, and now we're actually getting to do this. And I will point out, on the top of the screen there in the river area, you see what kind of jets out to the right, and that's a proposed river access with a marina. And what you see there along the river is actually Adrian's Island. So that's an interesting way that Adrian's Island actually ties in with MSP there at Chestnut Street. It kind of starts at the capital and ends at the prison. So very interesting tie there to the river. The next slide, too, you can see it a little more clear, Adrian's Island. And then this just kind of shows your orientation of where the site is. But I think it's so important because we are the capital city. We are the only city that has a river, a capital, and historic penitentiary, and that all ties together here. So that just shows that in the community. The next slide is a little more specific. It shows where everything is proposed to be on this development. And you'll see there, there's the hotel and conference center, and it's kind of hard to see. But and then the parking garage and ice arena, those are some of the main things that we've talked about during this process that you've probably read about and heard about the most. And then there's a few things on there. You'll see a museum, because we talked about the need for a museum. We wanted to have a steamboat museum here, and that discussion is still a possibility in the realm of possibility there. Train station is listed on there, because as we know, our current train station is unfortunately, it's a trailer right now, because we don't even have that building available. So these are things that could be looked at for the future. There's also a lot of mixed use, office residential, townhomes and offices. So that all shows where that could potentially be. The next slide is the exciting piece. There's the hotel and conference center. And, you know, if you're familiar with the Broadway Hotel in Columbia, and you've been to their rooftop, and you've seen what that can be, just imagine having a rooftop here in Jefferson City where you could actually enjoy a view of the Missouri River and the Capitol. So the nice thing about this is it gives us the right size, it gives us plenty of space for a conference center. We have to be very clear that when we build one, we want to put us on the map for people to visit. We are the capital city, and we are so central in our location that people want to meet here, but we don't have the space. So this allows us the space. The interesting thing is something we had not contemplated, and neither had the master plan developers, that this is to go where Housing Unit 5 is. So a few things kind of changed when we were going through this process is the tornado that came right through the prison did heavy damage to Housing Unit 2 and 5. 2 is the one by Capitol Avenue. 5 is the one closest to the river. So I'm talking about 5 right now, that it's significantly damaged. Luckily, those two were not historic. Historic value, but they are definitely something that we need to address, because the significant damage either needs to be repaired, which is probably not feasible, or torn down. And so they contemplate putting the hotel and conference center there where Housing Unit 5 currently stands. So that gives beautiful river access. It also gives access easily to Lafayette Street. So we have great access points on the site and a great view. So it really makes sense to do that. And definitely, they are thinking, the developers know the best area on the site to do something like that. So that is where that would be located and what that could potentially look at. You see on the bottom right, Housing Unit 4. And Housing Unit 4, what I like about this picture, it has a roof on it, because currently, the tornado actually has taken that roof off. So there is no roof on the very most historic piece of Housing Unit of property there on the entire site. So we are hoping to get that done. The state removed the roof. The state owns those historic housing units, and we want to still maintain that for tours and maintain that for a tourist area that it is, and it's exponentially growing, that Diane will talk about. So but that will really tie in with the site right there, and we will hopefully get that repaired. The next slide just shows you kind of a different viewpoint of what we were talking about there. And imagine, you know, having the river as the view and the hotel and conference center overlooking that. And then on the right is Housing Unit 4, which would be refurbished and remain open for tours. And the access site, you can see on the very far left, is Lafayette, which is what we have currently, the roundabout. And then this proposed street would go in between the site, which would connect with Chestnut Street to get access throughout the site. The next slide is more of an aerial view. You can see the courtyard, which is kind of, you see the, on the far left, you see the river, and then the conference center and hotel and Housing Unit 4. And then you see that open field of the upper yard, and that's something that we would like to see, hopefully, in the future, become a venue space. We currently hold once a year concert inside the walls right there on that space. And then you see Housing Unit, the one on the right next to it, Housing Unit 3, and then the one on the far right there at Capitol Avenue. So there's a lot of potential for what could be on the site, but this kind of gives you a good overview. And if you look on the top, you can see the potential ice arena kind of on the top left there. And as we know, there's definitely a need for that. Then the next slide is another aerial view, just looking from a different angle, and imagining what that will be. You'll see on the bottom left, a potential for housing, and the developers currently working with some local housing developers. And I know there's others that have an interest in housing. So I do think that having townhomes there would be a very feasible part of this, to have people live and have some residential mixed in with that. And then the next slide there is a view coming in from Chestnut. So currently, if you come in from Chestnut, and you know that the State Health Lab's on your right, and then the street kind of ends, but if you kept going straight, you would come to the river. And then on the left is currently just a parking lot. So really, the distinction here is most of the land is nothing but parking lot and kind of open space right now that this would all be built on. So it would really be an opportunity to take land that could be revitalized. The only building they're really talking about taking down would be Housing Unit 5. Otherwise, the entire historic area would still be intact for tours. So this is really right next to that. But it's neat to look at this picture and imagine actually coming in on Chestnut and seeing this. The next slide shows how they've kind of phased in this vision here for this project, and of course, wanting to start with different redevelopment areas. Mostly, the hotel and conference center would be the first piece, followed by likely an ice arena, and then the other redevelopment. The next slide shows that from a different angle, coming into MSP. But so when you see this slide here that's up now, there's the hotel and conference centerpiece, which is really, we know that that will really be the piece that spurs interest in development and everything on the site. That's definitely the main hub of MSP. And I see something about what would happen to the prison wall. Most of it would remain intact. Our goal is to keep as much of it as possible, and that is something that the state has in our agreement, that we would work together on that. So we'll be working through those details now, moving forward. But we would like to retain the historic integrity and just the whole, the part of the interest really that people would want to see in keeping most of the wall. We know the tornado unfortunately took out quite a bit of the wall. So what's left, we would like to keep. And the next slide shows, you can see the hotel and conference center there on the left. And again, I just can't imagine how great that's gonna be to have the view from that point. This next slide, this is gonna be really my last, or almost the last slide that I'm gonna show. The rest of this is mostly going to be financing and just a lot of charts and numbers, because I know there's like 30 pages in this presentation. But what I want to touch on here, and I know it's a little bit hard to see, or actually, go to the next slide, I'm sorry, the next one, there we go. That one is kind of the redevelopment and the cost. And it's kind of hard to see, but I would bring your attention to on the right where it has the item that says 27 million, and that would be basically the private investment. The next, I'm looking at the far right column there. So the next one, like the TIF, you know, potential tax abatements and other potential tax incentives that could be put in this, those would be new taxes raised by the project. So basically, those next, let's see, five items or four, I guess, there, one, two, three. Those next four things would be new taxes generated, which really would only be paid by people utilizing the site, shopping there, staying there. Currently, it's zero. So I think, and I want to draw your attention to that only because I know that there's been even council members discussing it, and in the articles in the newspaper, touching on how this is taxpayer funded and what that liability is for taxpayers, when really, what it is, is this is new taxes that would be generated. So this is a really great number to have, because currently, it's zero. We're not generating any taxes from it. But the taxes generated go back into the site. So that is how that works with our TIF and CID's. And we have those in other areas of the city where the taxes that are generated go, you know, a percent of it'll go back into the site, for example. So that's very exciting. And then we also have the CVB lodging tax, and that's something that we've been working towards putting to tourism and putting to a conference center. So that's very helpful. And something else that, as we made the decision, what is the city's investment? And we can look at this chart and think of what those potential investments are. But ultimately, the city's investment is our lodging tax and the capital improvement sales tax to build the road to MSP. So we have about $2 million that we're sharing and splitting with the county, the city and county, to build that road. So if you think about the different options and the different redevelopment plans that were put forth for us, that didn't change. Our investment this whole time has been the lodging tax and then the money to build the road. And so when you look at the other sources of income and what could potentially be generated here, it's really, really great here with the Chesterfield Plan, because ultimately, the city's investment has been the same all along. But we get a lot more for that investment with the Chesterfield Plan. And Sean, if you could go almost to the very last page, but actually, the second to last page of this presentation, just kind of scroll down. And like I said, there's a lot of charts and numbers that go all the way down till you get to a letter. There it is. The, is that the one? Yes, J.C. Parks, or maybe one more, one more up from that, Sean. There you go. I just want to point this out, because Jefferson City Parks and Recreation, as we know, has been meeting an ice arena, because the current one floods. And this letter here simply shows their interest and desire in working with us to make that happen, to have sheets of ice. And I could probably let Diane talk about that when she comes up. But we know that that really does set us as a destination. The only ice in Missouri is in Kansas City, St. Louis, and Springfield. So we are really on the map for that, and people come from around the country. And those of us that live here enjoy using it, too, plus the fact that having an ice arena allows potential for more expo space. So if this was built together, and that if this was planned together, then as you know, from other ice arenas around the country, they can use that for expo space. It's not only for ice. So it really gives us a major amount of flexibility there, and things for people to do when they come here for those conventions. So really, that's all I have on the slides there. But I wanted to share all of that, and really wanted to say that, you know, being the capital city, this is exciting. That we're actually to this point in the process where we're going to get this redevelopment happening. And we couldn't have done it without all the work done before us. And I have to mention Lieutenant Governor Mike Keough, when he was still a senator, was instrumental in getting legislation passed. This land did not come easy. It took a lot of work for us to prove that we were going to do something with it. And being here in our city and having successful tours and making the investments that we've made allowed the state to vote in favor of giving us this land to move it forward for redevelopment. So, you know, under Keough's leadership and all of our state reps and state officials that supported this locally and beyond, we're very thankful. And then Governor Parson for signing the deed to give that to us was really huge to have that level of support with the state. So the state has been our partner every step of the way. And an interesting tidbit of this is we are going to go ahead and establish a CID now, knowing that we're going to need that. So Community Improvement District and Holly Stitt, her property there at the corner of Avenue HQ, will be in that as well. So that's exciting for whatever she ends up rebuilding there. So it just, everything is coming together and all the partners. So I appreciate the public support for having this and all the tourism it's going to bring. So with that, I could turn it over to Diane. And I don't know if we have David on the line.
I'm on the line.
Well, welcome, David.
Good morning. How you doing?
Great. We're happy to welcome you, if you'd like to introduce yourself here.
Yeah, David Parmley, Chesterfield Hotels, Inc. And I want to thank the mayor for inviting me this morning in the chamber. I'm glad to be here. I was in transit, so I was doing audio only today. But Carrie did a great job of running through the project, much better than I could do, I'm sure. Public speaking is not my forte, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I will tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in Warrensburg, Missouri, and graduated from Southern Missouri State University years ago. Spent my summers waiting tables at the OSH House Resort, like the Ozarks, in St. Louis Beach. That's my first entree into hospitality. After graduating, I was hired by them to be the food and beverage director. Subsingly, Breckenridge Hotels took over management, transferred to Columbia, where I was Director of Sales, Campus Inn. Then I got transferred to St. Louis and managed several hotels there for Breckenridge. About 22 years ago, we built our first hotel in Chesterfield, Hampton Inn, right across from Chesterfield Mall. Two, three years later, we built a second Hampton Inn Suites down in Chesterfield Valley. Since then, we bought a Hampton Inn Suites in Steamboat Springs, Colorado. Then we built the Hampton Inn Suites and Stadium Rural in Columbia, which was the site of the old Campus Inn Hotel, to kind of come in full circle for me, having lived in room 148 for a year and a half down there. So and then we worked on the Broadway Hotel Project, which was started in 2000, a difficult time, not unlike where we're in now. But I'd say now is probably worse. But we had a lot of interest from people in that project. It took four years to get it built, but we think we put a good product out that's very favorable to the city of Columbia. And we actually received an award, the award for Best New DoubleTree Development Worldwide the year we opened that hotel. So we're excited to be involved in this project, and I would certainly welcome any questions you might have.
Dave, this is Sean Sappenfield with the Jefferson City Chamber. Thank you very much for being on this morning. We've asked our members, our viewers, if they have any questions, put them in the chat box. And I'm not seeing them currently. But Dave, can you stay on the line, or do you have to?
Oh, yeah. I'll stay on, but I think something, I would, if you go back on that slide presentation on page 12, the slide presentation, page 12. That's it. I think, yeah, it's probably the best view here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I wanted to kind of talk about how we determined the siding for the hotel and conference center and the expo center here. So our first visit to the site, take a look at it, it became pretty obvious to me that we're housing block, we're housing number 5 sits. It's kind of on a cormatory there at the end of Lafayette, and it's kind of got the platform in place already. So that made the most sense, both for the sense of arrival, we're coming down Lafayette, you get the nice federal courthouse on the left, nice roundabout there, cul-de-sac. So we thought that made a good first impression coming in there, and it offered the best view. And the most challenging thing we've dealt with in the whole site is the fact that we've got pretty extreme topography we're working with here. So knowing we wanted to have both the conference center and an expo, we tried to figure out the best way to lay those out and connect them. So if you see the hotel pointed out there with the dot right in it, that's still up at the, basically, the elevation that Lafayette and the roundabout is. So as you go further east, we then connect that. The next rectangle box is the actual conference center, and that's two stories. I don't have the exact square footage here, but about 30,000 gross, maybe. So that's like a large ballroom. It'll seat up to 1,000 people. And below that would be some additional meeting spaces, breakout spaces. And we'll also have some breakout meeting rooms inside the hotel as well. So imagine that's all at an elevation, let's say, 625. When you get down to where the old shoe factory is, and where the expo center, which is the next box towards the river there, the larger box, you're down probably 80 feet lower, and maybe 70 feet lower. So you've got quite a transition there to pick up. So what we've done here, if you visualize this, if you're coming to the expo center, for example, you would probably come down Chestnut and go around and park in the surface areas just beyond the redevelopment area 2A there. And then you would walk in at grade to the expo center. And we have also designed the expo center, you see dotted line out to the west of that, that's kind of a possible Phase 2. The expo center is very successful, we want to add on to it. We've left ourselves that option. Now, if you're in the expo center, you'd also come in the front door, you'd turn left, visualize having elevator banks there, would take you up to 50, 60 feet, and hopefully, glass elevator would be nice. And then you're connecting to that ballroom. So that's how we connected the two, the conference center and the expo pieces together.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Is there anything else that you would like to point out while we have the screen up and shared?
Sure. Yeah, I think that having the ice rink would be very helpful. And then in the whole project here, we're trying to find businesses that are gonna help for the projects around the hotel that will help drive the hotel business. We all know that the city's fairly busy five months of the year when the legislature's in, but we're trying to get people to come here year-round, obviously. So ice rink would be good. We want this to be a destination, rooftop, where people come from a girls' getaway weekend or something, and families come for a hockey for the weekend. So any developments we can add to this project that would further the tourism aspects, that would be great. The museum would be very helpful. We'd get that slotted up there on the hillside, east of Chestnut. So whether it be the steamboat museum or some other idea. Also, if you look at Phase Redevelopment Area 1, we visualize building first phase of the garage with this project. And then with the ice, if we were to do the ice, it would be, we probably wouldn't build up the entire garage at that point. And like Carrie said, I think there's been quite a few discussions with the Parks Department about that, and that may come to fruition, where it makes sense to do that along with the conference and expo center at the same time.
Thank you, Dave.
And I would like to add to that, David, thank you for being on the line, Dave. In this hotel, well, first of all, I want to make sure I'm the first one to reserve. I'm gonna have the first party on the rooftop there. And we're all invited, right? So but seriously, the Tapestry Hotel, what I liked about, why I think David's a very good fit in Chesterfield, is that they do a very unique type of hotel. We don't really need that cookie cutter hotel that you find off the side of an interstate. Like, we are extremely fortunate that, as you could hear, having award-winning hotels and having the Tapestry is a very unique type of brand. It's not just your typical hotel, which I think will be a perfect fit on this site.
Yeah, to that point, Carrie, I'm sorry, we could have touched on that. With the Tapestry, and much with the Broadway, which is actually a double tree, you go by the Broadway, a double tree by Hilton. But what I was able to do is, when I originally called him, I said, well, do I have to follow any guidelines for color scheme A, B, or C? He said, no, really, which one? Really? Do anything I want? Really? Do anything I want. Pretty much, you're going to have a cookie, that's it. I can do the cookie. So, we basically, everything, nothing was really off the shelf, it was all custom designed here. A lot more work, you know, a product that's very unique and very indicative of the surroundings in downtown Columbia. I'm just about using materials that live in downtown, both giving the over the past and lots of use the metal to kind of show the future, going forward. But I see it where we can customize this Tapestry, so it really pays homage to Jefferson's past and future. And excited about the opportunity to do that. So, it's not just a, hopefully it'll become a destination, something unique enough. And in the Broadway, we actually commissioned all local artwork throughout the hotel, so it was very helpful.
That would be perfect here. And I do want to touch on that. I first got to know Mr. Parmley with his involvement in Columbia. I was very active with Jefferson City, is with Columbia and the airport expansion. And David might have been the only hotelier, I believe, that actually, that at least that I remember sitting there, that was very, very working towards getting that airport expansion and the importance of that in Columbia. So, I only point that out to say that, David, you're very civic-minded and very involved in the community, and we look forward to having your engagement here in Jefferson City. That's just exactly the type of businesses that we really, I think, would love to see here, someone like you that really does care about the community and the growth and making it better. So, really glad to have you onboard.
Thank you. I think we did meet, that was the United Airlines first flight, I think, when they came in the airport. So, we were, I was actually on the committee for Prop A to get it passed. And yes, I was the only hotelier in Columbia to favor, in support of it. So, actually, when it came time to have the election watch party, it's pretty easy to decide which hotel to have it at.
Well, appreciate your support.
Yeah, I look forward to getting a call, meeting a lot of people on the chamber and community here and advancing the project.
We're glad to have you onboard, and tourism is extremely important, and that is a huge component of what we have here in our site and bringing people to Jefferson City. So, and I know I work very closely with the CBB, and Diane Gillespie is on the line, so she can give us, or on the video, so she can give us an update on what tourism means or what prison redevelopment means to tourism.
Sure. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, David, for wanting to invest in our community. So, from my connections over in Columbia, I have heard that you are an excellent hotel community partner. So, I personally look forward to working with you, and I know the CBB does, in making this project happen and have the opportunity to market it to the state to bring visitors to our community. So, as Kerry said, we are moving forward with the prison tours. As you know, we had to shut down, and we reopened June the first. Numbers are coming in pretty nicely. We have put in some new protocols and guidelines, so we're not doing quite as many people on each of the tours for the month of June, just to try to get up and kind of get going and just being a little bit careful. But so far, numbers are coming in nicely. We've also got Brittany in our office is working on a film project that we hope to bring in later this summer, which could be great for our city and for the prison site. Couple other projects that we're currently working on, I think several of you have heard about our buried cell project. We are finally authorized to move forward on our design, final design phase, which will complete this project, and we hope to have that portion of the tour opening later this summer. So, we will watch for press releases, and we'll be sharing information about that. Also, as Kerry mentioned, that the tornado did go through the prison site, as you know, last year, and we were closed down from May 22 to 1st of October, and then we were able to open back up with a kind of redesigned tour. But during that tornado, we have been able to repair the roofs of Housing Unit One and Housing Unit Three and do some other cleanup work. But Housing Unit Four, which is the oldest building on the site, did have the roof taken off of that. So, we've been working with OA, the state, to how do we get that roof repaired? So, the CBB board did authorize some funds to have an architect come in and do a design phase that will actually give us an estimated cost on what it is going to cost to get that roof repaired. We hope to have that by the middle of the month, and then we'll be knowing what type of dollars are we talking about to try to get the roof on and seal that building up. I was in there last week, had not been in there for a while, and the weather over the winter did not do that building any favors, and a little concerned of how it's going to survive another winter. So, our goal is to try to get the roof on there and seal that building up. As for, I want to go back to the MSP redevelopment site with the conference center and the expo is going to allow Jefferson City to go to the next level on conventions. You know, as we have over 125 state associations in the city, along with state conventions, and those are leaving our community and going down to the lake and heading up to Columbia, St. Louis, St. Charles, Springfield, Kansas City, we need to be able to have those meetings in our own community. So, this is going to give us that opportunity. But also on the ice rink, that's a niche market for us. There's no other ice rink in central Missouri. We have groups coming from all over the area to ice skate in that facility. We host an event in January that has an economic impact of about $350,000. That's just for one weekend. So, only imagine what opportunities we can have if we do have two sheets of ice and to be able to bring more tournaments and have events over there. But it can also be used for convention groups, for activities. I was down in Springfield, working down there, and there's the Jordan Valley Ice Rink, which is across from the expo center down there. And for one of our events, we had used that facility for a trade show, and we were able to melt the aisles down on one side of the rink, had concrete floors, and on the other side, we had ice, but we put plywood over the ice and used it for exhibits. So, it does give us some other opportunities to use, and we're looking forward to it. Anything else? And, you know, moving forward, you know, our city, we need to bring some money in here. We've been hit hard the last few months, and we look at tourism as being that avenue that can generate some funds and sales tax in the city. We're working with our hotels to offer some special rates for folks that do want to come in, go on a tour, and then they're here, and then they can go over to the Capitol and visit our other sites in their city. We have Slute America coming up, it's on a weekend. Again, the hotels are offering some special rates, and we're hoping to generate and bring some people into our community. I know that's kind of, are we ready to welcome visitors into our community? I think a lot of our sites have put protocols in place and guidelines that will give our visitors some confidence that we are cleaning our facility and have taken all the precautions to open it up for visitors again. So, you know, I think we're moving forward. I think everything will be okay. We just hope that we don't have another surge during the fall and have to shut down again. So, I think with these extra protocols in place, that maybe we can keep moving forward.
Thank you, Diane. At this time, since we have three experts with us this morning, obviously, we'd like to, if there's additional questions, we'd like to pose those questions. So, what I would suggest is, is obviously still have the chat box that you could write into, or just unmute yourself and chime in with a question. But I'll go ahead and start the questions. So, next steps, and that's a question, I guess, would either to Kerry or to Dave?
Well, the next steps will be really sitting down with Dave, with Chesterfield and our tourists and all of the partners, and working through what we're going to do. And this is a phased-in approach and looking at all those phases together and how we're going to do this, and, you know, really digging into more details. So, although this is very detailed, it's still somewhat of a high-level approach that we want to really get into how we're going to make this work so that we can start the building process. So, ultimately, this next step was focusing on one developer, and so now we have the remainder of this year, the resolution we passed, I think, gets till December, the end of the year, to get all the details finalized of our, basically our development agreement moving forward. So, we'll be really doing the hard work now of getting all of that and what everything, you know, the funding piece and the construction piece and really laying it out, because this is the general idea, and things may change as we have that really opportunity to dig into it together with only one developer.
Yes, I'd agree, Kerry. We actually had our first call with Gilmore Bell and Ryan, the city council, and Pat and Assie from Development Dynamics yesterday. So, we're working on an outline of the term sheet, to kind of pull up points of what steps could take place here. As I've said in a couple of council meetings, this is obviously a very complex project, lots of moving parts here, so a lot of hard work ahead of us here. It's not going to be easy, and I recognize that. I'm stepping forward to work through it. So, as I said, in the Broadway Hotel, it took four years to get that from start to finish, so certainly I'm patient. And I half joke, my first hotel I built, 1997, we put up a sign, saying, "Opening Spring, 1997," or whatever it was. And then I ended up painting over it, it said, "Opening Summer, 1997." Then I painted over that, sort of in fall. So, now I've put an opening sin, so we hope to get it done, we'll get it done as fast as we can.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Our group this morning, again, if you have questions, you know, either raise your hand or you can unmute yourself and pose a question. Any from the audience? We went silent this morning.
Well, if there's not, I would encourage you all to consider supporting, you know, the penitentiary, like telling your friends that it is open now for tours, and they are taking the precautions like Diane said. So, it is open. Encourage you to be engaged with Diane. People may not know, there is a Jefferson City Foundation that benefits things like prison redevelopment. So, you know, we really want to engage and support, because after the tornado, I know that, talked a lot with Diane about the penitentiary, and we wanted to focus on the community getting rebuilt, but we really, we didn't want to take away from the fact that we were rebuilding homes and businesses to focus it on the prison, but it is a good time, you know, she's been working on it this entire time of getting the prison back. So, it's an important asset that is very unique to us and extremely historic and really rare and one-of-a-kind, and we want to keep it going. So, I think that's important. I didn't mention, but I will, that Concert Inside the Walls this year is going to be September 12. I believe that's a Saturday night, September 12. Smash Mouth is coming to perform. So, you know, we've come a long way from when we were not able to utilize it for anything, and then we brought Travis Tritt here in 2016 and brought several, you know, we've had several acts now every year that come, and I think we have a lot of potential. So, you know, remember to support that and utilizing this space as an event venue and event space. And really, we just kind of started tapping into that potential. It's amazing, I think, what we're going to be able to do, and especially once we get a hotel and conference center built out there, this is just really going to be amazing.
Mayor, you can see the chat there. How, as far, could you expand on possibly the community? How can the community support moving forward?
Well, I think the community, for one, has been very supportive in, we had over 1,000 people that responded when we put a feedback out on the city's website. We had a lot of letters of support, people coming, and there was support really for both developments, but there really was, I think, a level of interest in actually utilizing the site to the fullest potential by moving forward with what we have on the table with Chesterfield and our tourist groups. So, I think what the community can do, though, is realizing that we are still in the stage that it will still take ultimately agreement between the developer and the city, and so encouraging your council members that, you know, if you like what you see and want to see this move forward, to continue to encourage that. So, you know, reaching out and talking with council members. For example, our next meeting, the very next one, we're going to approve a CID for this, but it's not done. So, you know, talking to council members and saying, yes, we really see the importance and moving that forward, we support some of these initiatives that you're putting out. So, we know that it will take more and more of that. So, I think encouraging council is important. When you see your state reps, and I know when we see Dave and Rudy and Mike Bernsketter and Kehoe, that we often thank them, you know, for what they've done here, because the state is still a huge partner ultimately in this, and we want them to be a partner through the whole process. So, kind of remembering who our partners are and thanking them. And then I think, you know, thinking about, once it's built, there is opportunity for more developers to come in and have a part of this development, which is great. We're being able to spread that development around, and then knowing that once it is completed and built, that we would be able to utilize this ourselves here and enjoy it, enjoy whatever's going to be built there.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we have about 10 minutes. Want to get everyone back to work by 10 o'clock this morning.
Well, I see one more question. If someone is interested in office space, let me see, what does that say? If someone is interested?
Who should they reach out to?
Well, I think if they're interested in, I guess it would depend if it's renting or building. If building, I would say, reach out probably to Mr. Parmley, and he can put them in touch with that, or Ryan at the city, or myself, if they're interested in development. Now, if it's rental, then probably the same thing, right, Mr. Parmley?
Yes. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have interest in development or renting. It might be a little early for the renting part yet, but, you know, the remaining pieces we have here, we look at it, once you build out the conference center, expo, and hotel, I mean, if we're going to do the ice rink, that takes a good portion of this property up, and, you know, it leads to the residential component to the southwest corner, the southeast corner, I guess it would be. And then basically the track that runs along the hillside, east of Chestnut. So, you know, we haven't got those, those are our best plans for those areas, but we're flexible to that. And I think that's one of the advantages to our proposal, was that, you know, the market's changing with COVID, and a lot of things to be found out, what's going to work, what's not going to work, going forward here. So, I think it actually gives us the opportunity to pivot as we need to for those remaining pieces or parcels throughout here. Once again, hopefully we find pieces that will both support the hotel and also create kind of the mixed use, where it's a work-to-live type environment, hopefully with residential, retail, entertainment venues, et cetera.
David, they've asked for your contact information, if you'd like to give that out.
Sure. My email is dparmley@chesterfieldhotels, with an S, dot net. And my cell phone number is 314-941-7448. So, if you want to, you're welcome to send that out to the chamber contact list or however you want to entertain, be happy to talk to anybody about any ideas they have, thoughts.
And now, and would you also, I think the spelling, though, of Parmley is a little bit different. Would you specify that?
Yes, it's D, as in David, Parmley, P-A-R-M-L-E-Y. It's not like a Parmley law firm.
Yeah, we'll get that. Kelsey will get that for us. Kelsey's typing in on our end, Dave. Thank you.
Right.
And then also, something that we're working on is, the next council meeting, we are voting on a contract to be awarded to move forward with construction of the bicentennial bridge. So, that is huge, and that will directly benefit this prison redevelopment project too. So, if you think about it, there's, it was amazing, because Monday night's council meeting, we actually voted to move forward, not only prison redevelopment, but conference center, and then now at our next meeting, we'll vote to move forward on hopefully selecting a contractor now to, or approving the contract to move forward with construction of the bicentennial bridge, which is, should start then this, late this summer and be finished hopefully by the end of next summer. So, we just have all of these things that we talked about in our community. I know the bridge was from the 1980s, and this, the concept of a conference center in our community has been talked about for decades, and then also prison redevelopment. So, I think we should be really proud of our community for coming together. And I know when you asked, what can we do as a community? We have really come together and said, we really support these initiatives happening in Jeff City and how wonderful that is. So, since, dear thanks to especially the chamber and all of our community members, because I know the chamber's been really instrumental in all of that too. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, everybody, for inviting me today, and I look forward to meeting the chamber members and getting to know you all better.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dave, and thank you, Diane, for sharing your time this morning and answering questions. Okay, folks, we have about, let's say, six or seven minutes left before 10 o'clock. So, what I would like to do is open it up for any company, business announcements, community announcements. And what you could do is just unmute yourself if you would like. And what you could do is just unmute yourself if you would like to make an announcement. Do I hear?
Good morning, everyone. This is Crystal, hi. This is Crystal Becker with Catholic Charities of Central and Northern Missouri. We came on board as Chamber members, so just wanted to say we're excited to be on board, and myself as a young professional. The announcement that we'd like to make is we're actually starting a Open Heart, Open Doors, a new home for Catholic charities campaign, and involves renovation of the La Salle seminary, and many know it as the Schickles Building, and it's going to be renovated to a food pantry, health exam rooms for screenings and healthcare providers, classroom space. So, we're kind of launching that campaign and looking forward to talking in the future more about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Holly Stitt.
Hello, Holly.
Hi. And as it was announced in the beginning, Stip Barony did purchase four buildings at the end of Capitol, on the 500 block of Capitol Avenue, that we're going to be developing and hopefully getting going in the next two years, as well as our first phase of the International Shoe Factory. What I did want to bring out and, and announce is, I'm on the Cultural Arts Commission, I'm the chair. And the Cultural Arts Commission and the Parks and Recreation, we have this program called Sculptures on the Move, where we get sculptures in your timeframe, and we put, move them around the city. And there has been one this year that was just placed in front of my old building that got destroyed in the tornado from Avenue HQ, called Dissident. And it's built, it's built, set there and chose that spot because it's an interactive art piece that views the Capitol from one direction, the MSP from one direction, and the CBB from one direction, which makes it a really unique spot there. That piece, when talking to the artist, when Parks Mark chose to put it there and asked me, I thought it was a great way of showing casing this area becoming back into the development that it needed to be and showcasing the highlights of why this area is so important. So, it's kind of a different kind of a piece, but when I was talking to the artist yesterday, when he was installing it, it turns out that this piece was one that was a different piece in the beginning, and it got destroyed through a bunch of vandal acts that happened with it. And this is what came out of the pieces of that art to create this piece, which I thought was also very fitting in a place that came up from destruction. So, if everybody comes by and sees, it's a little different. The bronze pieces remind me of the I-beams from my building, and the colorful green spot that showcases the Capitol and our historic buildings there are also pieces, remnants of the bright colors that I had in many of the places of the, of the art that I presented in Two Avenue HQ and the places that were there. So, I hope everybody has a positive outlook on that piece that got placed yesterday.
Thank you, Holly, and thank you for your purchases. Very nice. Any, anyone else? We've got a few minutes left.
I was going to quickly mention, this is Joey O'Connor here. The Eastside Business Association is doing a food drive for the, it's actually a food and cash drive for the Samaritan Center. It is next Tuesday, June 9th. It's going to be from noon until 3:00. So, if you're out and about and want to donate any money or goods for the Samaritan Center, feel free to drive through and, and we'll take them from you and get them donated there to the Samaritan Center. And that is, at the Samaritan Center, we will, we will be receiving those. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey.
I'll jump in and share, on behalf of the Jefferson City West Side Business, we're going to be gathering for our Spring Fling, which has been rescheduled for June 16th at Canterbury Hill Winery, from 4:30 to 6:30. We'll have a 50/50 for our scholarship fundraising program. Food and light hors d'oeuvres will be provided by the facility cash bar. We are going to be outside as long as the weather appropriately cooperates. So, we'll be able to gather and network and, and share some good business opportunities. So, that's Tuesday, June, excuse me, Wednesday, June 16th at 4:30, gathering for that.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else? Okay. We got it. Okay, go ahead, Joey.
I just want to let everybody know that Capital Plaza Hotel cannot accommodate us on June 9th for our annual awards banquet. So, it has pushed back again to July 14th. Just didn't want anybody that was planning to show up, that hadn't RSVP'd. We're letting everybody know, but just in case you didn't get the memo, our annual recognition banquet is still going to happen. We're going to still honor those kiddos, but it's not going to be until July 14th at Capital Plaza Hotel. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Okay, anyone, anyone else? Going once, twice? Okay. Well, let me just say thank you again for Mayor Turgeon, Diane Gillespie, and Dave Parmley for being on the phone this morning, or on the Zoom, I guess I should say, and on the phone, and providing the information. Obviously, very exciting news that we received on Monday night. And obviously, we're all looking forward to the developments and the turning of dirt at some point in the future. So, again, thanks to everyone, and be watching in your emails for the next Friday Coffee, next Friday. Topic to be determined, working on it, but 9 o'clock next Friday morning, hope you all can join us. So, from the Chamber, have a great day and have a great weekend. It's going to be hot, it's going to be hot. So, put tanning, tanning oil, I guess oil, on, and go have some fun.
Sunscreen, it's called sunscreen.
Sunscreen, okay, sorry, sorry. Maybe that's too old, old school. All right, you're making my face.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.